All the meeting for order, Mr. Woods.
Oh gracious in heaven, Father Lord, we coming for you again, Lord, the humbly we know how. Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather again this month, Lord, and we make plans for not only this month, Lord, but for the future of Marlborough County. Let it continue, Lord, to agree or disagree, but work for one purpose, gotta make Marlborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Father, these all blessed in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, approval of agenda items, are there any additions or deletions?
No ma'am, I think most will have said the agenda written.
Say.
It's been moved and second that we accept the agenda for tonight, November 13th, 2018, as printed, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the October 9th, 2018, regular council meeting. Any corrections or editing notes to be made?
Motion, Mr. Ford. Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept the minutes from the October 9th, 2018, meeting as printed, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Oh, business, and before we can take a look at ordinance 777, we need to amend the title, and the ordinance should read, "Ordinance 777, and Ordinance Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of an Infrastructure Credit Agreement by and between Marlborough County, South Carolina, and Project Sunshine for Special Source Revenue Credits and Other Related Matters." Intend a motion to amend the title for ordinance 777.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and second that we amend the title as previously read for ordinance 777, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, unanimous. Now, ordinance 777, authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Marlborough County, South Carolina, and Project Sunshine for Special Source Revenue Credits and Other Related Matters. This is second reading.
Move.
It's been moved and second that we approve the second reading of ordinance 777, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. New business, approval of convenience center fees, Mr. Mullin, would you elaborate, please?
Yes ma'am, if you look in your packet under tab four, you know, as you, as we mentioned in a prior meeting, we, the city of Bennettsville is changing their policy, or in the process of doing that, about picking up, you know, junk off the side of the street. And in the county, we charge, council charged a $40 fee, so there is no charge if you live in the county to take your trash to our convenience centers. So, once we learned about this change in city, we had to scramble to try to make arrangements to take money from city residences, residents, because it's not fair that, you know, we charge people in the county, we don't charge people in the city. In the meantime, during the hurricane, the scale that our main convenience center were damaged or destroyed by flooding, so we had no way to weigh, no way to determine the weight of the material. So, Mr. Carabo and the staff and public works came up with this price list that we feel like is a fair representation of what it cost us to dispose of these different things, you know, everything from upholstered furniture, TVs, and toilets, and construction debris. So, I'm not sure whether we have to have your approval or not, but we would like to have a vote, just recognizing that you see this. This will apply to all our convenience centers, you know, for folks bringing it in that aren't county residents. And we check, we'll check your ID when you come in, and if you either live in the county, or if you own a piece of property in the county, and you paid that $40 fee, there is no charge. But we think these are very fair, I mean, we're not trying to make money, we're just trying to cover the expenses. So if there are any questions, I can try to answer them, or...
I understand there was some discussion at the last city council meeting about this issue, do you happen to know if they approved or tabled it?
I think they're meeting tonight, I think they're meeting tonight about it, and I'm looking at the press, because I know he told that of me. So, this will, this will, should apply anyway, it may be that there's a situation where there's even more than, people don't want it on the side of the streets, so I think it's a good move either way.
I agree, just to have it in place, and the amount seem reasonable considering. Questions?
What about the other town, over there in Bennettsville?
Well, we're gonna have to enforce this on other towns as well. The first focus is on the Bennettsville situation, and then we'll look at the other Clough and McCall stations. You know, what council may want to consider next year is putting a small fee on the city resident, the town resident, so that they can bring it for free as well. But, you know, the towns that, where they don't pick up this stuff on the side of the street, you know, which I think is Clough and McCall, if you brought one of these items out there, we'd have to, we'd have to collect money from you. We have to treat everybody the same, or at least we feel like we do.
Was there any discussion about the city bringing...
Debris to us.
Debris to us.
No, you know, right after the storm, we offered that, and, but they didn't, they didn't want to do that, or whatever, so we haven't taken any debris from the city or the towns.
All right, thank you for that information. Intend a motion?
A move that we accept these fees.
It's been moved and second that we establish this fee schedule for citizens bringing debris to our convenience sites, and that their residence will be documented. All right, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next, we have approved of the 2019 holiday schedules included in our packet. And, Mr. Mullin, anything in particular we should be taking a look at?
No, coming from the private sector, I mean, this is great for me, because we based, with the wind blows a certain direction, we take a day off, but I think it's in line with every, you know, other government around, and, and no different from the prior year, so we'd ask you approve it as presented.
Right. Intend a motion?
So move. Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept the 2019 holiday schedule as printed, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. I see that employees, courthouse employees are required to work January 1st, is that for taxes?
Yes ma'am, we'll work that with the elected officials, and, you know, actually, anybody that's involved in anything like that may be required to work.
All right. Opening and acceptance of bids, Mr. Carabo, thank you.
Madam Chairman, Councilwoman, we requested bids for paving the courthouse parking lot, and we included the hill area where the new apartment's gonna be, and did the walk. Furb rating and paving came in at $56,742.50, I don't know what $0.50 came in. Having another corporation, Convent, came in at $77,854. So staff recommends that we accept the firgrating and paving.
Very good. Will that be done before the end of the year, if the weather holds, maybe?
We're gonna try to work it in during the down schedule for courthouse, so we're gonna try to work it in.
Now, will parking be allowed on that spot?
Yeah, I mean, what they've done is create parking spots up here on the hill, and they'll be, the corner part won't be paved, so there'll be a little green space there. I know there's people talking about green space, but we have 100,000 feet of green space around the courthouse, if somebody wants to sit down. I'm not really, you know, but, and this is coming from the left, the remainder of the bond money.
The bond money, thank you.
It'll be nice.
And we do need parking, court time is always an issue. All right, thank you. Intend a motion?
Motion.
All right, it's been moved and second that we accept the bid from Fur for the paving at the courthouse, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Any appointments to boards and commissions? All right. Mrs. Moore, financial report, please.
Madam Chairman, members of council, as of the month of October, the expenditures were at 32 percent of the budgeted amount. Residence should increase over the next few months as tax revenues go out, and thus more people will come in. And as you can see from the line graph, residents are coming in as they have in prior fiscal years. We've gone live with our new payroll system, ADP, this week. Currently, employees are using the system to punch in and out daily, and we will process our first paperless payroll with this new system for checks paid on November 30th. We've put a lot of work into this convertive, but it has been well received, I think, by our departments, and our employees are making great efforts to adjust and use the new system. But we've been really pleased with that so far. Our annual financial audit is progressing well. All auditors have been with us since last week, and there will still be gathering information, and still be on track with the time of all the confusion.
Great.
Are there any questions?
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna move the microphone here, since we...
For the administrative report, we always recognize employee anniversaries, five years or more. This year, we have several, we have Mary Collins with five years, Lori Davis Moses with 14 years, Ricky Gooden with six years, Gary Harrington with 13 years, and Christina Thompson with 12 years. There are a number of events, you can see on there, the Christmas parade, Bennettsville Christmas parade is December 4th, the council will have a float, and the details of all that, when you need to be there, are listed there for you. Town of McCall will have theirs on the 5th, and also have a float available there. And then Clough, I think it's, they haven't set their date yet, but I imagine it's probably right in there, so you can make a week of it if you want to go on the Christmas parade tour. The county Christmas dinner, the seventh annual, has been scheduled for Thursday, December 6th, at the Wade H. Prince Recreation Center, so we're looking forward to that. The economic development partnerships drop-in has been scheduled on the 10th of December, and the county employee drop-in, which you are, of course, invited to, is on Wednesday, the 19th. A lot going on in December, as I'm sure there is with your own, in your own lives, but we want to make sure and make you aware of those events. As far as economic development, we continue to move forward with Baldor Project, the ordinance you changed title on tonight and voted on for a second time, is, that is the Baldor Project. They have applied for the state incentives, and that's going, you know, before the coordinating council, we hope to hear this week on that, so everything is moving forward. You know, typically, a lot of the details on the project wouldn't come out, but we've been talking about it so long, you know, I feel like I need to share with you, so we didn't just make up a name and keep talking about it. With the Delta Project, we met, Mr. Carabo and I met with our environmental consultant, Steve Weber, the environmental lawyer we've always used, about doing the assessment necessary under the DEHEC rules, and this is where they just go out and identify things we need to clean up, and come up with a plan, and then that plan will be our roadmap for how we move forward. We hope to have that plan by January 1st. This also has lasted longer than we thought it would, but is moving forward. We're excited about it, DEHEC's excited that we're doing something about it. As far as the reg, the regular part of the administrative's report, the PDRTA, our joint project with PDRTA and Care South is moving forward, the bus system is moving forward. Today, and this week, the PDRTA crowd is in town, trying to time the routes, and come up with where they're gonna be at certain times. They expect to have a service starting on December 10th. We talked about the end of November kind of thing, they, they want to go to the 10th to make sure they have it, you know, like they really want it. They've hired five drivers from the area, and they're training these employees, obviously that's pretty intensive. We're excited, today we, we were able to get information back from one of the industries served, and that one industry was gonna have forty, between 40 and 50 employees riding it. So it's a big deal. And, you know, we, there's been a lot out, we've put a lot out about it, you know, so people would know what we're doing, and I just want to remind everybody that, you know, Clough and Blenheim, City of Bennettsville, and I believe McCall have all made, you know, contributions to this as well, including Love Foundation made a big contribution. That, at first, wasn't being publicized, so, and once we get it, when it comes operational, we'll promote that as well. We want folks to know this was a very much a collaborative effort, and a good thing for the county. So that's moving along nicely. Also, I wanted to mention again, we had some questions about the watershed district that controls the ditches, the irrigation ditches in the southern side of Bennettsville. That did pass on the ballot to disband that group. We're continuing to get lots of calls. You know, I had our county attorney look into it a while back, and one of the things that that Soil and Water Conservation Board had to do was make a determination that there was no operation or maintenance necessary on the project, and that they had fulfilled their obligation. They apparently had a public hearing and made that determination. Unfortunately, if you go look at the ditches, you know that that can't be the case. But, there aren't county ditches, you know, and I don't know, you know, where council wants to follow, taking on everybody's battles, but citizens in that area, I'm just referring them to the Soil and Water Conservation Board, and...
Did you say they are county ditches?
No, they are not county ditches.
They are not county ditches, and the election did not make them county ditches. Right, thank you.
And there's, you know, people will say whatever, and I'm not sure what's being said, but they're not county ditches, but they are a problem.
Yes.
And, you know, they, also on the ballot were the election for the board members that would have been on it, and there were a number of write-in votes, but nobody had enough for them to put them on there, you know, that's really what should have happened. But again, it's unfortunate, because there's probably hurricane money that could come that would fix the ditches, but if the board doesn't exist, you know, I don't know what you do. So, that's where we are with that. Last thing is sort of related to it, you know, this afternoon, if you were around town in Bennettsville, you notice that Crooked Creek is coming out of the banks again. And, in our dealings with FEMA, and Congressman Rice's office, and other places, we are repeatedly being told that there'll be hazard mitigation money that may be available, so that if we go identify something that happens every time it floods, you know, there's an area in Clough, or Richardson Park, or whatever, that every time we have this storm that floods, it may be that we can receive money to do, take some action to stop that. And, you know, we're all been, all been, all been very busy trying to just deal with the storm in general, but in talking with Dr. Prince, with Chairman Prince, you know, I think what, what she and I have agreed to be a good idea is to host some sort of meeting with all the different councils in the community, try to identify the problems that are recurring problems, and then hopefully come to some consensus where we all can agree on what we want to go after money-wise, and then make a joint application. You know, we do it all together in the county, and everybody's involved, it'll have a lot of strength, you know, be a lot stronger there than for us to do our thing, and the city of Bennettsville, or town of Clough to do their thing. So, once we get past Thanksgiving, which I believe is next week, we'll try to find a date and have something in the late afternoon, or, you know, enough time to get off of work, and just open it up for folks to come and talk about things that we're seeing. Obviously, Richardson Park, Shady Rest is a big one. You know, you have other areas of county, the neck, and all that, Red Bluff and all that, that flood, we can look at that, but the intent would be to get everybody's input, come together, have a, you know, consensus in something we want to push, and then go chase after the money. Congressman Rice has a staff person who's very persistent about this, and keeps calling me, and, and they're looking for something to push, you know. So, anyway, I think it's a good idea, applaud Dr. Prince for pushing it along as well. That's all I have, if I can answer any questions?
Well, to add to that, the conditions of the Shady Rest and Richardson Park area, I've had calls too with citizens about Crooked Creek, the city, that's in the cities, overgrown, the trees that have been down, not been removed, and we've been, in conversations, we've been trying to find out who's responsible. So we won't stop pursuing that until we find out who's just responsible for that. And it's my perception that we need to be proactive, because we know it's happening right now, it's only been raining for a couple of days, and, and I do believe in overwarming, so it's just going to be when, not if, but when, and it's very prudent that we stay ahead of this and do what we can to protect the citizens and the people's property, because the water erodes, you know, the roads and curbing and things like that. So I hope that all of you will be supportive of this effort, and as soon as we can identify a good time, we're gonna have that meeting. We've got to do something to help our community. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. We have Mr. Greg Childress, and is that Janice?
Javier.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do need to have my eyes examined, my apologies, sir. From SBA, would you give us your names and titles, please, for public reference?
My name is Greg Childress, and I am a PSA with SBA.
Javier Contrato, also a PSA with SBA.
Okay. Thank you guys for having us, I'll say that, and we'll be brief, I know these meetings can be long sometimes. But, we're here with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance, and we're here to talk about low-interest rate loans available to survivors who have suffered storm-related losses. But first, I'd like to note that the deadline to apply for SBA disaster loans has been extended until December 5th. And it's also important to follow the process if you apply for a loan. The first step is to register with disasterassistance.gov. If survivors are registered to the SBA, we urge them to apply for a disaster loan, even if they're not sure they'll need one. Survivors who do not, survivors who do not have to accept a loan if awarded one, and the SBA loan is just another good tool to have around if you need it. Let me also emphasize that there is no need to wait on an insurance settlement before applying for an SBA loan. So let me tell you a little bit about the loans. The SBA loans, the SBA provides low-interest loans to eligible businesses, private nonprofits, homeowners, and renters who have suffered storm-related losses. Homeowners and renters are eligible for loans of up to $40,000 to repair or replace personal property, such as clothing, furniture, appliances, and cars. And homeowners can receive a loan of up to $200,000 to repair or replace damaged homes or other real estate. Businesses and private nonprofits may be eligible to receive up to $2 million to repair or replace storm-damaged buildings, inventory, furniture, fixtures, and machinery. They can also receive up to $2 million in working capital to use for ongoing expenses until business returns to normal. Interest rates, and these are 30-year fixed-rate loans, interest rates for home loans are as low as 2%, interest rates for businesses are as low as 3.675%, and they're as low as 2.5% for nonprofit organizations. There are three easy ways to apply for these loans. First, you can go online to disasterloan.sba.gov. You can also call our customer service center at 1-800-659-2955, to apply for paper applications, or visit a disaster recovery center. And, we're just here to ask for your help. I took a tour of some of your damaged areas on Friday, and so I know there's a need for it here. We just wanted to ask for your help in encouraging your residents here to apply for these loans if they think they might need them. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, actually, just want to add one thing, because I, just a statistic, is that I hear in Marlborough County, out of all the people who apply with FEMA, and they were referred to SBA, only 26% applied for an SBA loan. So I think we need to get the word out, to let people know what the SBA loan, how they can actually take advantage of the SBA loan, to, for them to really recover fully.
And, I think we want to talk about the recovery center, and it's at 214 East Market Street here, and we got a very good staff there, just drop in, and anything you want to know, they can help you with, they can help take applications, help you prepare your application, and give you good advice on, on how to pursue these SBA loans and other assistance. So, thank you again for having us, and we look forward to working with you.
Any questions? I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
So, a person doesn't have, does not have to apply for FEMA before they can come and apply with you?
We, we are encouraging you to first apply with FEMA, and that's at the disasterassistance.gov or at one of the recovery centers. That is the very first step, and from there, if FEMA refers you to SBA, then we will begin to work with you there. But, the first step is applying with FEMA at disasterassistance.gov or at one of our recovery centers.
Yeah, so, you know, actually, you know, yeah, one of the things about disasterassistance.gov is actually gonna allow you to get all the, any, any federal assistance that we have available. So you're gonna, that's the best thing, that's the first thing that you should be doing, or any, anybody who was affected.
And if, I think I said earlier, it's important to complete the process.
So the first step is applying at FEMA. Does a person have to have any estimates for damage repairs and the cost?
When they first go to the center, all they need is a driver's license, and you will learn whatever other documents you need from there, just have a valid driver's license.
December 5th is vastly approaching, there are some people who I know are still waiting for con, for licensed, reliable contractors to come provide information. So I'm worried about that December 5th deadline, but...
Just go by the recovery center and get, get the process started. If, just to get it started, all you need is that driver's license.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
What the process is started, and you say at the December 5th, once you're in the system, you're in the system, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just get started.
Yeah, okay, just get it started.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? All right.
Thank you again, love this town.
You said 26%?
Yes, it was 26%.
Of people that started the process with FEMA, 26%?
Okay, yeah, there was, everybody who applied with FEMA.
Right.
And, and they were referred to SBA.
Right.
For bank on SBA loans, only 26% actually applied.
Okay, got you, 26, okay, thank you. All right, thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you, we appreciate you being here. All right. Council members, you want to start, Mr. Oden?
I guess I'll start if you ask, ma'am.
Well, I guess things are, have settled down pretty much since the hurricane. Still got a lot of issues with people's property, and they're still trying to figure out the best way to remedy the situation. Holiday season's upon us, will be next week, this time of year, a lot of people out on the roads, looking for a free Christmas at the expense of somebody else. Sheriff's, pretty limited number of manpower he's got, but he's got about 28,000, 29,000 people in this county, and we need to all be proactive in your community. See something out of ordinary, a car that's in the area longer than it should be, or a van, you need to call 911 and, and at least get a deputy to investigate it. It's always good to be proactive and reactive to situations like that. Your neighbors, a lot of people go out on the holidays, and if they let you know they're going out, sort of be a good neighbor and look out for the property. If you see something, like I said, that's out of ordinary, please call 911 and get somebody to look in at it. Hope everybody has a great holiday, it's Thanksgiving's next week, and we have a lot to be thankful for, that the storms did not do as much damage as they could have on us, so, but anyway, we still dealing with the problems of that, but just be thankful that it was not worse than it really was.
I don't really have anything, everything's going pretty good in Blenheim, we're just getting more rain again, and starting to, some of the same roads flooded again, I seen, you know, and I had to take some different roads coming tonight, but, anyway, other than that, things going pretty good, and I hope that the first year, we can get back on going to things, and maybe get through with all this storm and stuff, so we can get back to business, but, other than that, that's about it.
Voters turned out, 45%, you know, I talk about the voters all the time, 16%, 22% of the population voting, man. This time, we hit up about 45%, this is great, this really means a lot to see people come out and vote. I mean, from Marlborough County, hey, that's a very high number, so that's real good. The, the other thing was Friday night, this... The other thing was, uh, Friday night, the second of November, the Veterans Affairs had a dinner dance for the veterans. And over two hundred veterans came out, not counting wives and friends and all, right? Over two hundred veterans came out and they gave out awards and that was, uh, that was a great night. Just to see the bill and the support that people in county is giving to the veterans, which is well deserved. I'm really pleased about that. There's a whole lot of other things that's going on, but the holiday is coming up, so I'm just going to pass it over to Jason.
Alright. Um, yeah, I've got a couple, even a couple of calls on the watershed district about it flooding in Brusher Bay area. So like I said, it was, uh, there is a need there for somebody to do something. Uh, you know, we, it's not the county ditches, but I mean, so, but, uh, we're looking at every part that we can to help whoever we can if it's possible. So the next thing, I think administrator and his staff are working on the Delta project. It's like it's been over a year that we've been working on it, but you know, it's still moving. So hopefully, uh, it won't be long when we see some real major progress there. The next thing, we've heard a lot of complaints or this and that about US Highway One. It's the oldest highway in our system and, you know, and it was, uh, seemed like it was put on the back burner for reopening. Uh, so it's tearing up a lot of our other roads. But what I did find out is, uh, there's a water line that's there beside it and they have to bore under the creek. They have to make a bore under that creek, uh, so they won't let them hang water lines on bridges anymore or by those corvettes. So they got to make that bore and as soon as they do to bore under the creek, I think it was a good bit of money they weren't expecting. But, uh, have to do that bore and as soon as they do that bore for that water line. Because they have to get water to the people on the other side. And once they do that, they'll be able to start on that, uh, repairing that road. But it's been a long time. I think there's other roads that's still out too. But, uh, resident engineer here for DOT, whenever he finds out about it, they're unloading equipment. So there's nothing coming from the state letting those guys know when things are happening either. So there's, uh, you know, some discord somewhere or another, but, uh, but that is in the progress. Uh, so hopefully it'll be worked on here in the next week or so, once the weather permits. But I imagine the creek's about full of water now, so it may wash out even more, so.
This is number one?
Number one.
In Wallace?
In Wallace.
Yes sir.
I have nothing to add.
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope that you're traveling in a way that you will get to your destination safe and back home.
Amen.
I concur on that. Um, you know, we know that this is family coming in, uh, from colleges and, and more like a homecoming thing. So it's a good, a good time. Like I say, give thanks to, we still here. The law unfortunately, you know, y'all hang up before this, you know, next couple of weeks and months. But, uh, you know, you've got good leaders, you've got good staff, so I don't, you have no problem, you know, you can do the best you can and keep everybody safe and happy. And SBA, um, the long thing, we hope that more people from Marlborough County will take advantage of this opportunity. Um, so, because like I said, we are definitely, and a lot of it is not knowing. You know, that's our biggest hangup, if people don't know who to go, where to go or who to talk to, you know, or being afraid. I can't give so much information out, they're going to do this, they're going to do that, but help is help. Um, so people in Facebook land, help is help, so get just help while we can.
Back to you, Doc. Thank you. I was...
Ms. Plitzer, our ratings are going to go down. You don't have a good story tonight.
Oh, she's got one.
She's got one.
Uh, we were asked to announce that, um, a local agency that traditionally gives away turkeys for Thanksgiving will be doing so Saturday morning at nine o'clock at the high school parking lot for people in need. This is a traditional, I don't know any other details other than that. Paving for West Main Street has begun with the initial curbing and potholes. So hopefully they can get that project done before bad weather sets in. We survive a lot in the county and thanks to, um, good leadership from the sheriff's department, administrators and staff and others, uh, Mr. Carabo, Mr. Steve, the nine one one. Uh, it's good to know that our people are ready and step forward. And I think the county is, uh, we're going to assume the leadership in looking into what we can do to resolve some of our issues with the ditches and Crooked Creek and trying to make, um, the easily flooded areas of our city and county more habitable for our citizens. I think that's a civic duty. We take pride in providing for the people. And if there's something that we can pursue, we're going to pursue it. So we ask for your support in that. Prayers around for everyone. There's always a lot of sickness and other kinds of things. We all have a lot to be thankful for. So draw your families and your friends close and enjoy the turkey. And they say people gain the most weight between Thanksgiving and New Year's, so get ready for your ten pounds and enjoy. Thank you. Yes sir, please, I'm sorry.
Ms. Plitzer, yes, Paul, and to everyone, son, son of my boss, I wish y'all a happy Thanksgiving. But let me just say this, please if you would, if you see something, say something. They have started to hit our churches again. About four years ago, we had a rash of churches hit, I think it was like twenty-two, we got them last night. And of course it wasn't him this time, because he's just been able to get out. But they hit every piece of church up on all our roads up there, getting hurt from them churches.
Right.
And it would have been, uh, it would have been late Friday night, early Saturday morning. They went in there and they took the P system down, but thinking they could get just a couple of speakers. And right now, best we know, we thinking it's going to be a black four different figures, probably a late model. We're not going to shoo on that right now, but we're still working on it. So I say that if you all are out and out around churches or if you see something, color of vehicle, tag number, possible male, female, black, white, it doesn't matter, anything that can be helpful that will help us because it can't be everywhere at all times. So if y'all just keep that in mind, particularly during the holidays, I very much would appreciate that so very, very much. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Yes sir.
Uh, I'm sorry, but we forgot to mention where the disaster recovery center. We mentioned where the business recovery center is.
Right.
It's located here. But, uh, it's, uh, the disaster recovery center is located at the Marion Wright Elton Public Library in Marlborough at two oh three Fidgel Avenue.
Right, thank you.
So that would be a good place to sit.
Yes, alright, thank you. Alright, if all minds and hearts are aligned, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Alright.